All right, I will call this meeting to order and we'll start with the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, could we stand for a minute and have a little prayer for Gene Mikowski?
Yeah.
He's in the hospital and I don't know all the information, but I guess he's in intensive care and what was it, a heart attack, I believe?
It's a stroke. And he's in pretty serious.
This is Jerry?
Pretty, pretty serious condition. Gene Mikowski.
Oh.
Yep, so that's, that's, that's the news and he's hospitalized tonight and in very serious condition, so. A moment, please. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, I have a couple items before we move to call to the public. I wanted to give everybody an outline of... Oh, yeah, let me go to roll call first, then I'll go to the outline stuff. Roll call, please.
McGee.
Here.
Dumas.
Here.
Duff.
Yes.
Medrow.
Ingris.
Yes.
Scott.
Here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Frederick.
Frekovic.
Here.
Douglas.
Here.
Morden.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Tisha.
Psycho.
Here.
All right, okay, and here comes Scott. He is here. I've heard from Mr. Medrow. He is unable to be here. He's out of town on business. He did send along some thoughts on the park though, which I'll share later.
Motion to excuse. Second.
Motion stack. Second Duff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. All right, before we go to call the public, I wanted to give everybody kind of an outline of what we're, what we're going to do tonight, where we'd like to be and what I'd like us to get out of this. Because it's, a lot of folks haven't been through this process before. So what, what we're working on tonight is master plan for Clara Miller Park. Trying to come up with a good, long-term blueprint for how we're going to develop the park. What we'll do tonight is we'll go to the first call of the public. Folks probably haven't heard a lot of what we have here. We're going to have a presentation from our park planner, from Chris. He's got a lot of information about what's in the plan, how it got to be, where it is. I'd like to go to a round of discussion up here amongst both council and park and rec board. Talk a little bit about what we like, what we don't like, what we think is missing, what we think could be added, like that. And then I'd like to open to another round of discussion from the public, so we get more input. And hopefully, that second round, you'll have heard enough to give you a better, a better sense of where we are, what we are, what we're up to. So I want to preface that first call to the public by saying it's possible we may be able to answer a lot of, a lot of the questions you have in the presentation or afterwards. After we, after we get through that conversation, I'd also like us to go through a prioritization exercise with the members of council and the members of park and rec. Pretty similar to what we do on council when we do a goal session. We've got a list of things. I sort of pulled out some of the major things that are listed in the plan right now. We can certainly add them as they come up. There's been discussion of a veterans memorial, so I put it up there. Other things that were interested can come up. I'll just kind of go around and the way we do this is everybody gets five votes. You can put them all on one thing if you feel really strongly about it, or you can split them out across multiple things. And hopefully, usually what we get to at the end of that exercise is a pretty clear sense of what people feel are the most important things for us to focus on. And I think that'll really help to inform what we come out of this meeting with.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Quick question. Will we have parks and rec go in front of council on that?
I was just planning to go around like left to right or right to left.
Okay.
I, I think, I think for, for, for this one, we're doing this as a joint meeting and I think both council and parks and rec should, you know, have a fairly equal voice in what we do.
Okay.
So I really want to hear from everybody. I probably would have started with the left and gone right, but not for any particular reason other than left to right.
Ken, why don't you go first?
So we'll get through that. I hope we'll, we'll get to the end of it. Just a couple more words before I open to the call to the public. Around this concept of getting a master plan for Clara Miller Park, there's been a good deal of confusion, a good deal of miscommunication. And I think some of that has come from council maybe not being clear on the process we were going through, where we were, where we were in that, some of it from people seeing parts of what we're doing and, and kind of running with the idea. We all, we all recall the hubbub of this summer. That wouldn't have been the way I would have chosen to kick off our, our planning and prioritization exercises. But I think it did show the importance of having a plan for Clara Miller Park. Because with that, with putting that initial, here's what this could look like. We got a lot of feedback on, you know, the idea of, of the soccer fields, some of the changes associated with that. Could take a look at it and prioritize and decide, yeah, that isn't what we want to do here, and we've been able to remove it. That's really the idea of a plan. In terms of our legal requirements under planning, we have a village master plan that we're required to update every five years. I think it's next due in 2020. We have a park and recreation master plan, overall recreation for the village. That's updated every five years, usually in conjunction with the master plan. This is a little separate thing because this is really specific to Clara Miller Park. And that's really the thing that I want us to make sure we concentrate on is, what's our vision of Clara Miller Park? What do we want that park to be going forward? Five years in the future, 10 years in the future, 20 years in the future? And then, once we know that, we can get up and start making that happen. So I think that's all I've got on this. Any other questions before I open to the call to the public? Agreeable, agreeable order, order of things for everybody?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. With that, I will open the first call to the public. Please either come up or use one of the portable mics and give us your name and address.
Hi, Christine Medrow, 515 Laguna Court. I've looked over what you guys have. I think basically it's a really good plan. I like a lot of the stuff that's in there. I like the active use layout, pretty much the way it is now, but maybe with the addition of the splash pad. At first, I wasn't so sure about that, but I like the fact that that is handicap accessible. And I'd like to see the equipment change over as it gets replaced, so it's more handicap friendly. I like the, I, I would like to see an additional exercise pad put down there. I think parents working out can watch their kids play. It might, you know, do a, be a dual purpose there. I like the pavilion expansion, the upgrade to the bathrooms. I think they definitely need the maintenance shed electricity. I'd like to see improvements to the existing baseball fields and the soccer field, so, you know, maybe kids can do a drop-in soccer game where they're not going to get injured. I like the horseshoe pits where they are, but I would like to see maybe an additional one down by the tennis courts, like what's in the plan. I like all the natural play areas in the mixed use. I wouldn't mind one down by the passive use where the exercise equipment is, because I, I'd like to see more greenery down there. It's kind of just plain. I do like the addition of all the picnic pavilions, but I'd also like to see one down at this on the passive use, because I think they could use a little bit of shade there. I'd like to see the butterfly, butterfly garden kept or maybe expanded, because I think that's a really neat thing there. I do like the addition of the central trail loop and the porta potties, because it kind of helps. And I do think you need to add the parking lot down by the tennis courts and this volleyball court if you move it down there. So it's easy, more user-friendly for people, so they don't have to park it the way two ends to get to that middle. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else when we do this first call to the public?
Dave Remwick, 685 Armenia. I was here for the brouhaha, as you want to call it. I don't understand the whole idea of why this master plan had to happen now outside of CW3. That seemed to propel everything. I hope you guys understood it, because up until that night, only one member of council was against the idea, actually openly against it. And everybody else was sitting there chomping at the bit, pretty much. And we even had to apologize to CW3 as a council for things that were said. Ooh, my. What, what the heck was that all about? You guys need to, as a council, apply what I have come to call the lake factor to Clara Miller Park. Clara Miller Park is what, 13 and a half, 13 and a half acres? The lake is 265 acres. Putting 94 more parking spots in Clara Miller Park would be like putting 1,228 outside boats on the lake. Anybody on council in favor of that? Putting 94 more parking spots in Clara Miller Park would be like extrapolating that since we have a pocket park on Armenia, you should put 29 boat slips down on the lake access for Armenia. Is anybody on council in favor of that? Obviously not.
Just to be clear, Dave, the, the parking lot expansion was part of the soccer field.
Yeah, but you didn't get that. You didn't get that until half of the village came in here just about and told you that was a really bad idea. Nobody seemed to understand that was a really bad idea up there. I get it. Do you get it? That's the question. Council's done everything it can to restrict access to the lake, and you were going to open up the floodgates on Clara Miller Park. You still are, in a way. Because we really need an amphitheater and a splash park for a village park. We really need that. We really need one and a half million dollars of improvements, so-called improvements, in a village park? A million and a half? Seriously? We need a playground for the kids. We need a place where the adults can walk and sit in the shade. We don't need all of this extra garbage. And this whole thing, according to the propaganda you put out, was pretty much supported by 92 people from the park or from the village and 10 people from outside. If you go by the 2010 census of 3,000, or yeah, 3,382 people, population over eight, over 18, that's 2.7% of the pop, the adult population of the village. And you guys are going to base decision-making on that. 2.7% of the population. That's what you call a sampling. That's not even a drop in the bucket. And where is all the money for this going to come from, according to your propaganda sheet? The general fund, mostly. Why do we have money in the general fund? Why do we have almost $2 million over in the general fund? When we shouldn't have near that much, when we should have at most 30% of the budget in the general fund. Why don't you return that money to the people instead of sinking it into a park that only has 2.7% interest from the villagers? I'm sure everybody in the village would be interested in getting a little bit of money back on their taxes. On their, excuse me, fees. That's right. The garbage fee is a fee, not a tax. Excuse me. Instead of sitting up there taxing and spending, because that's basically what you've done. You've built up that general fund to something that is obscene. How about giving it back to the people instead of putting it into your little pet projects? $180,000 for a weed harvester, seriously? And now a million and a half for park improvements? I got an idea. When you get around to what you want to do, put it to a vote of the people. If it's going to cost a million and a half, put it to a vote of the people and see if the people want it. Because you guys have made some really bad decisions as far as this park goes. And that was shown a couple months ago at that meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Kathy Frost at 1609 Apple Orchard Lane. I would like you to spend money on one thing. This is personal, but my privacy fence backs up to the parking spots. And I believe, and I'm not exactly sure of the date, but it was about 1985 or '86 that we put up, I don't even know what to call them, like parking blocks, they're wood, across the privacy fences, because people were ramming their cars into them. Well, they have come loose. They're wobbly and they're loose. And one was so bad it had fallen down, and then someone stuck it back up. So I thought, this is dangerous, because kids like to climb on those. So I walked around and I pushed it back down, and someone stuck it back up. So maybe if you guys take care of those, they're rotted, and kids do climb on them, and you're just waiting for a possible lawsuit from somebody. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else first call? Okay, seeing none, I will close the first call to the public. And then what we'll do is we will move on to... Chris Nordstrom from Carlisle-Wartman.
Should I use the microphone?
Yeah, mic, yeah, microphone, because we've got people listening on the recording. We've got a portable one, though.
Can they move up since there's a seat there?
My name is Chris, my name is Chris Nordstrom. I'm the planner from Carlisle-Wartman. I'm a landscape architect there. When Wolverine Lake came to me, or came to us, I should say, about a year ago, and asked to come up with a plan for, for Clara Miller, my goal was to come up with a way to bring more people into the park. That was my primary goal. And the reason being is the more eyes you have on the park, the better this, the sense of ownership you have among the community, which then in turn leads to things like lower incidences of crime, less vandalism, and just a general sense of pride in the facility. So we started looking at different ways that we could bring people in. And what struck me was that the way this park is structured right now is you've got a lot of use on the west side and not much happening in the central and eastern side of the park. So I tried to go through and think, well, what can we do to bring people through the park? You've got the trail, which is a great asset and helps to bring people through right now, but there could be some other adjustments that would help to improve that a little bit more. The second aspect of my plan was to try to be as fiscally responsible as possible and try to find ways to save money for the, the community as they looked at different aspects of improving the park. And that's where the now infamous CW3 soccer plan came up. At the time, it seemed like a good idea, and we've heard loud and, and clear that it's not something that people are very fond of. So that's something we're, we'll talk about a little bit more here tonight. I probably should preface this by saying, all of the things that you've seen in the plan up to date, this is, this is draft number one. And even as you have a plan in place, that doesn't mean that this is in stone and that it cannot be manipulated as time goes by. Things change, and that's what planning recognizes. So if we go through and, and start to implement some of these, these projects in phases over the next five, 10, 20 years, and we've suddenly decided, well, you know, there's this really great new technology that we want to put into this plan, we can look at that. The plan can be adjusted as we go forward. So I hope you, I'm not here tonight at all to argue. If, if you're unhappy with some of these, some of the items here, that's fine. I want to listen. That's my, my role tonight is to listen to you and hear what you want to say. So with that being said, I brought a few boards up here. This, I'm going to actually set this down a minute. The first board over here is simply the plan as, or the park as it exists. It's an aerial. I've got a close-up of the, of the west side of the park in here also. All this is going to really show you is that you've got the existing ballparks here, which will pretty much stay in place in the next version of the, of the, the next draft of the plan. You can see there's not a lot going on in the central part, except for the, the tennis courts. And then the same thing could be said about the eastern quadrant, except for, or eastern third, except for the, the Vita Trail and the exercise equipment there. So what I came up with then was, for the first draft, I looked at that and realized that, well, so you've got active use here. Maybe there should be a transition zone in the central part here. We've got the tennis courts already, so maybe we can start to take some of the, the play equipment and, or, or some of the ideas that are happening down here and bring them into this area, so you get a little bit more active use, but not an overwhelming amount. The big thing that was changed in this first draft was actually closing off the roads that are going through and making it so you've got a parking lot here instead, and this becomes a large field in this area here, which could be used for any number of different things. It could be just left open space. It could be forested. I proposed a picnic, picnic area in there. It's, it's a, basically a blank slate. And then the last section was trying to get a little bit more of a natural feel to the park. You've got a great little forested patch here that needs some work and needs some help. There's a lot of invasives in there right now. And you've got this nice exercise equipment here, but that, you know, that's... And you've got this nice exercise equipment here, but that, you know, that's about it. So maybe we just keep that as passive use as much as possible, with just a few tweaks here and there to make the trail something that can be used by everybody, that it becomes accessible, a little bit easier on your feet as you're jogging, and just a little bit, just slightly more appealing, so that when you're coming in along the trail and you're going through, you're like, oh, maybe I wanna hang around here a little bit longer. The second plan is really a mirror of the first, with one major exception, and that is that Oakland County does require that any kind of improvements you make to your facilities does require that you capture and retain stormwater. So I implemented, I put in quite a few different rain gardens, so the suggestion of a butterfly garden, expanding it. That might be a really good way to do something like that. Put them on the side here, which then meant that I had to move some of this stuff around a little bit more. So where I had the volleyball court shifted slightly here, I now took it and put it in the central part, or the central part, in that big field that I was just talking about. Again, the idea of pulling the activity a little bit more towards the middle. Ignore the fields. That's not gonna happen. Down here in the active-use area, the really, truly active-use area, one of the things that I thought about was creating two playground areas, one for five, for five years, the tot lot, basically, five years old and younger, and the other for five to twelve. And that could be switched around, however you wanted to do that. Within this, and in the central part, was the idea of a splash pad slash amphitheater. The reason for that was because this park is really your central park. This is the center of the village. And if you could have something like, when you've got your corn roast, or if you have concerts in the park, or you have other events that come up, you could theoretically have a stage on the edge of that splash pad, then you could have people sitting on the hillside looking down at that. The kids could be playing on the play equipment. It's just a nice central location. That does beg the question about parking, and how much parking do we really need? Now, without the soccer fields in place, we don't need as much, maybe, as was shown before. So we could probably lose some of this parking. I've never been a huge fan of this area here. I'd like to preserve that forest as much as I could. But at the same time, if you're going to hold large events in the park, such as the corn roast, and maybe other festivals that come along, you may wanna consider at least resurfacing the existing parking, if not pointing in some kind of expansion somewhere along the line. Couple of other items that I should point out here. One of the thoughts I had was for the existing roller hockey rink. And I thought, boy, it would be nice if we could just recess that about a foot, flood it in the wintertime, and now you've got an outdoor ice rink. So you're starting to see more activity here in the wintertime. You could have a winter festival out here, ice sculpting, what have you. If you've got the concession area improved, you could sell hot chocolate there in the wintertime. The basketball courts stayed pretty much as-is. I suggested expanding the existing pavilion area here, the large pavilion that's over by the restrooms right now. Just again, with the intention that if you did have a large event, if you started having families coming and renting out the park for weddings, or for just family gatherings of any type, you'd have more ability to, for the village to make some money off of that. It simply just makes it more useful. In fact, I should probably, let me zoom in on this a little bit here. One of the items that came up and has been talked about pretty much since the beginning of this was the idea of reconfiguring the entrance so that it's a boulevard. It helps to slow down traffic a little bit. And having an electronic sign at the front, which would be an improvement over the existing sign that you've got right now. Help me out. What, where's the corner? I'm trying, forgetting which street it's.
Oh, the sign up there at Glengarry.
Yeah, yeah. Which, thank you. Which, as I think you all know, is very easy to miss as you're coming in. But this, if you could have some kind of alert system set in there, an electronic sign would be a great way to go. The other thing I would say about this area in general is you'll notice there's a lot more trees on this plan than there, than exists right now. And that's very deliberate. I mean, I've found, over my years, that the parks that people tend to go to the most are the ones that have a little bit more wooded feel to it. Somewhere where you can sit in the shade. So there are benches along the trail, and they're sitting underneath some trees. And this is just something that, we all know that the more trees you have, the better air quality, and just the better quality of life of the area in general. So I tried to put in a lot more than is existing right now. I did move the horseshoes, out of necessity at this point. First off, I don't know how much use they get. I think there was some question about that, and it seemed like there wasn't a lot. But at the same time, you know, it's something that is very low maintenance, it's very inexpensive to install. So I thought about taking that, I'm gonna put this back up here now, and moving it over by the tennis courts. You've got a little bit of a field, a space there that would work perfectly for that. This is an existing wooded area through here right now, and in this area, I suggested a natural playground. And by a natural playground, I mean, this is something where your kids go and they use their imagination. It's not shiny metal and plastic. It's wood structures, it's logs, it's things that they can climb on and jump off of. It's going back, I'm gonna say to my day as a kid, and for some of us in the room, maybe you weren't kids when it was, that was still around. I don't know. There's, I also suggested a BMX trail. And this really is nothing more than the existing trail that's there now, where the kids have dug out the sand pit, and they ride their bikes on that and jump around. It's just formalizing it. It would not be something that we would have motorbikes, or any kind of, like motorcycles or anything like that going through there. It's simply something where we put up a sign that says, "Use at your own risk, and here are the rules for utilizing this," and make it so that the kids feel like they can go there and play, and mom and dad knows that their kids are out there biking in this spot that's relatively safe, away from traffic, and they don't have to worry about it. I'm going to the BMX trail, Mom. Okay, I know where you're going. I already talked about, again, closing the roads and then moving the volleyball pit over here, the volleyball court. You already mentioned the idea, or what I had put in there about having some expanded parking over in this area, for the exact reason that you mentioned, that we're trying to make it so that you can access from here without having to walk all the way from here down here. Now, the park is supposed to be active use, we're trying to get people to exercise, but there are gonna be times when people wanna just go get out with their kids and wheel over to the tennis courts or the volleyball court, or whatever. And then the last bit over here was just trying to make this a little bit more approachable. So we put in some picnic pavilions. In fact, we scattered them all through here, because, again, they're not terribly expensive. They don't have a huge impact or footprint on the park. And it's just something that, if you can get more and more families coming in there and saying, hey, let's have a picnic in the park on Sunday, it's a way to get people on the door. The Vita Trail, I suggested resurfacing it with crushed limestone because of the ADA factor. With crushed limestone, you can roll a wheelchair on that. And that's, right now, it's a cinder block, or it's crushed cinder, and so you couldn't roll over it easily. I thought about keeping the existing exercise equipment, although Phil today gave me a really great suggestion for possibly putting a veteran's memorial in that spot, and taking the equipment and scattering it along the trail, so that as you're making the loop, you can stop and use different pieces of equipment. And I think that's a great idea. And then, of course, putting some toilets over on this end, improving the park signage so you see it, so you know that this is a park entrance up here. And that's about it. So all of this is really a lot of shifting and replacing items. I don't think I got rid of anything completely. Added a few things, certainly, and upgraded some other things. And that's where we are right now. So now, I wanna hear from you what you liked and what you would like to see changed. And it's certainly opened the Florida unit at this point.
All right. Well, so I think what we'll do is we'll go to a little bit of discussion, kind of around the table up here, talk a little bit about what we like, what we didn't like so much, what we'd like to see. And maybe I'll kick it off, and then I'll just go around again in order and let people off. You know, see what they're on. So a couple of things that I really liked in the plan when I got it in hand and really looked at it. One of which was moving activities into the central part and into the eastern part. Right now, that's an area that, you know, we do a lot of mowing of the lawn there, but there's not a lot that really goes on there. And I thought that would give people more of a sense of space, and I like the idea of clustering a few activities together, you know, in the central part, in the eastern part, so that there's something to attract people and something to move things out there. I especially like the idea of upgrading and improving our playground equipment. We've, over the last couple of years, learned a lot about ADA-compliant playground equipment, what's different about it. Certainly, what we have there has been there a while. I would really like to see the playground equipment upgraded. I like the idea of at least doing sort of improved bathroom, storage concession, and an electrical drop there, so that when we do use the park for larger events, it's ready, it's there. I think that's something that, there's been sort of an ongoing need for something useful there, and I like the idea of having that. And one thing that I also liked in the plan overall that I saw was an emphasis on forestry. Getting rid of a lot of the invasive species and undergrowth that have grown up in the wooded areas, clearing them out a little bit, so they're a little more inviting, a little bit more accessible. Keeping the large trees, getting some new plantings in there and growing some more wooded areas. I think that would be, that would really make that park more useful, more friendly, more welcoming. The things that I was less keen on when I looked at what we have now, a couple of the big-ticket items in particular, like the idea of a splash pad is really cool, but it's also a pretty spendy thing to do. There's a lot of maintenance that goes into that. And as a small village, we don't have the sort of resources to back up something like that that larger communities have. It becomes, it becomes a much, for the amount that we would spend on that, I think we could get a lot of bang for our buck in terms of benches, bike racks, smaller things that we could do to really upgrade the park. And so that's where we are. That's what I thought as I looked at it, and, you know, kind of the things I like out of it, that I'd like us to concentrate on. But I really wanna emphasize at this point, that bit was just John McGee's two cents as one guy sitting up there. So I really wanna make sure we hear from everybody what you all want. So I'll start down here.
Could I?
Oh, sure.
Can I just say one thing, 'cause I wanna hear everybody's opinion on it, and I don't wanna tell my whole story. Now, I just, the driveway, they were talking about at one point taking it through to the other side, and I don't know if that's, if that's an option at all.
That bit of parking lot expansion was really part of, if we wanted to do the soccer fields in here, that's what we'd have to do. We'd have to create the additional things. That's, with the soccer fields, I think that's out. Yeah.
Well, I just wanted to hear everybody's opinion, 'cause I don't think it would be, I mean, I understand why people didn't want it when we had the soccer fields going through there, but maybe opening that up, maybe that would just, would help just the throughput. I know we've had, you know, traffic issues, as we've dealt before.
Okay. Let's go. Let's go right around in order, and then that'll give everybody a chance.
All right. Well, number one for me, to address Scott, would be the dumping out onto Brisbane, I would be totally against. I think it would be used as a cut-through for traffic, and I don't wanna put the people on Brisbane in that position. I like the idea of expanding the equipment and making it more user-friendly for ADA. And really, I mean, the big one, I wanna hear from Parks and Rec, wanna hear what they have to say, because they've been working on this for a lot, a lot longer than I have. But the concession and the bathroom needs to be improved. So those are my two biggies at the moment.
The bathrooms definitely need to be improved on. Getting an adequate power drop in there for the corn roast and other events. Also, just, again, updating the fixtures, the toys and whatnot, to make them more compliant. About it.
Over at the entrance at Glengarry Road, a sign would be great to show that that's even part of Clara Miller Park. Along with, I know there's a memorial proposed, that would be a great idea, and also scattering that Vita Trail equipment, if that's reasonable to do, down that trail. And BMX area, I would like to see a sign that marks that as a BMX area. And I know when I was a kid, my brothers and my friends are not in prison today.
Hex angels.
We played in the woods. We did. And it was great. There's competition, there's a little bit of risk, which I think is a good thing, especially for young kids. And it doesn't even have to be terribly organized. You can put four dirt mounds, and they will find every square inch of each four of those dirt mounds. They don't have to be organized or anything. And I think that it would be a good destination. Park benches and trees, I think those two would coincide well. Having a place to sit in the shade when it's ninety-three degrees and humid out would draw more people into the park and get people out of their houses. The parking lot itself, it needs perhaps a boulevard, but it's gonna need resurfacing at some point. And the restrooms, like Mark said, we'd like to get a power drop down. The volunteers that do the corn roast are using generators now, and the generators are loud, they have to scream over them, or have a PA system that's loud enough to overcome the noise of the generators, if we can get adequate power there. And then, I don't know if those are barrier-free bathrooms or not. If they aren't, hopefully, we can bring them up to code and perhaps even expand that building to include some storage for either, the equipment that our Park and Rec Board has to dig out from attics and basements and wherever else they can store the stuff, maybe we can get something centralized so that the volunteers' time can go more toward the events and making the events better than all of the orchestrating of getting the equipment and everything to make those events possible. That's it.
All right. Actually, Scott, before you start, so a couple of people have mentioned the potential for a veteran's memorial. We've had a little bit of information distributed out here. Let's get through everybody talking about the plan first, and then I'll ask Debbie and maybe Phil to talk a little bit about the proposal for what they might like to see there. So, okay, go ahead, Scott.
I won't repeat what these guys said, 'cause I agree with everything they said. I didn't know about Brisbane, but if you say so, you're probably right. And I think I heard that same thing, you know, when they were talking about it with the CW3. The only thing that I wanna talk about is the, there's these sections of the park, and they don't seem to, you can't really, I always thought the park ended right there. And I didn't know that, like, over by the, till someone, till we did the park walkthrough, hey, there's tennis courts over here, and there's all, it just seems like that area could be maybe opened up, or some way to get through there easier. But I also like the fact that we have open spaces, whether there's trees there or not. I think that's what a lot of people like in a park, is just the open space, you know, not, you know, not to have to have something every, you know, splash pad here, or something else here, the pavilion over here. I don't think you need all that stuff, but trees are always nice, and like you said, shade is all it is.
Scott?
So I agree as well about the road. I wouldn't wanna see that road go through. I would definitely like to see better signage for the park, and the boulevard idea, I think, is awesome. I really like that. The BMX trail, my kids like, were up there for years in that trail. So, you're gonna keep it dirt, right? You're not gonna...
Yes, we are not putting in a velodrome.
Yeah. I like the idea of moving the equipment further down into the park. Like, the proposed volleyball area, I like that. I like keeping that away from the area where the kids are all playing. So I like that. I like the bike rack idea, we definitely need that. I, for one, think an amphitheater would be an awesome idea. I work in a community that has an amphitheater, and they have great events there all throughout the year. They have pumpkin carving there, they have jazz, they have face painting for the kids, they have all kinds of things going on there. So I think that would be an awesome addition to the area. Other than that, just scattering the equipment, I like the idea of the equipment where it is... is all together rather than spreading it out. I see people using that all the time.
Do you take those bikes?
Yeah. Yeah. I like that equip, I see people there all the time when I'm riding my bike, so. I think they're nice. Oh, and the bathrooms, definitely, we got to do that.
Nathan, I'm going to skip you for now, but-
Please do.
But it'll all come back to you in terms of actually getting this-
Yes.
-plan to implement itself.
First of all, opening up that to Brisbane is a no automatically. I don't think there's any sense to doing that and causing problems. I went around and talked to some neighbors that view the park almost every day, and also that exercise thing that we have out here on Glengarry. That is a bust. Not many people use it. We're looking at maybe 2% or 3% of the community. What I'd like to do with that out in Glengarry is move that and scatter those units around the trail like it was when we originally had it. Take that cement slab and put a small gazebo there with a picnic table, for there's a place for maybe seniors to go and rest, or people who are walking or riding their bikes want to get off and get in the shade and relax. But there's a lot of reasons that doesn't get used, and some of the people that back up to it said, I don't know, I see people looking at it, but I see very few people using it. And I think that's, that was a lot of money spent on something put in the wrong location. And when I saw this plan that Carlisle Wardman brought, I didn't know what community they were doing this for. I mean, this is Wild Green Lake, amphitheater, spring ponds, and moving this to here and all that. I think there's a lot of stuff in here, and when you have all these things, remember you need volunteers to do it. The last event we had, they were so shorthanded on volunteers, I felt sorry for the people that were putting it on. It was, you just can't do this. And you say, an amphitheater would be nice, yeah, but who's going to come? Let, if we're going to do this kind of stuff, let's say, okay, we're going to have three concerts in the summer. Pick three different venues, you can get that stage, or go in and see how many people come. The only thing we have is the corn roast, and that's the only time I've ever seen the parking lot packed where you couldn't find a place to park. And you want to put a boulevard in there for what, one or two events a year? And then you talk about moving all this equipment around. I think the equipment up in front like that is a good place. One, it's visual for people that use it the most, that grandparents and people with children. And I don't care what anybody says, I've pushed my fair share of wheelchairs around. And there's no, nothing better than asphalt or concrete. I don't care how hard-packed that gravel is, those front wheels start to do this. And we should have a trail through that whole thing, so if somebody comes, and let's say one person's in a wheelchair and the other person isn't, you can all walk that and then go to whatever equipment you want. We do need some more equipment, and I think what we should get is more that's handicap accessible. But we're talking about a concession stand. One or two events a year, you're going to build a building and a concession stand? If you need a storage building and you don't want to keep it here, then that's one thing. But to plan on cooking and having a concession there, and again, just, Mr. President, what do we do besides the corn roast, that we get people there?
Tuesdays in the park is one that attracts quite a few.
Okay. But again, that's one specific thing, we don't need an amphitheater for that, and that's for kids. And the other thing, the horseshoe, you ride your bike around there? That horseshoe, I don't think a horseshoe has dropped in there in the last 10 years. So, take that, because first of all, you're going to play horseshoe, I don't have no horseshoes, do you got any horseshoes? So, you got to bring your own. And then you got to carry them, what, 250 feet to get to it? And the other thing is, I just think that a lot of these ideas that I'm hearing here should be tested first. If you can put a free concert out there and you get droves of people, that's one thing. But if you're going to build a theater and do all this kind of stuff and nobody shows up, it's a waste. And I don't know about anybody else, but every time I was in the area, I drove through that park, kids don't go to the park like they used to. I lived in the park, and probably most of us did. Now, you look at the sports, how many of them are down because kids aren't into it? That, I never saw, I personally never saw a pickup baseball game at that park, a bunch of kids out there playing baseball, you know, right field's out, pitcher's hands, first base. And you're doing all this for, why? Just to spend money? I hope not, because I'm not for that. But I believe we really have to try something first. If it's successful, then think, well, maybe we should put a little theater here, but a splash pad, come on. And one other thing, somebody mentioned about the park, the lake is our downtown. And the other thing, and then I'll quit, all these smaller parks that we're putting up, and even this one, instead of hiring somebody to turn a small park into Disneyland, if you hire a contractor who builds parks, and they bid on it, like, let's say, the island in Armenia, you get a guy, he says, oh, yeah, we're park builders, and they're put together, there's trees, and they install it, they put the plants and everything. But what we're doing is, we're paying somebody to think for us and do for us, then now we got to go find a contractor to do it. And obviously, from what I could see and hear, there was not a whole lot of guidance from the community. That's it, I'm done.
All right. Kelly?
All right. I would like to see signage added to the road, especially at Glengarry entrance, where there's nothing there to tell you there's a park there when you're driving by. I'm all for park improvements, upgrading the playground equipment, adding greenery, I'm not sure about the roller hockey area. I don't see it getting used a lot. I don't know if it got repurposed to a hockey rink that that would draw people in. It might be something people might be attracted to, because I don't know any other communities that have one. Going further down into the park, I would, where the Vita Trail is, I really like Phil's idea of breaking up the existing pad where everything's located and scattering that. And this ties in also with the Veterans Memorial, which I am in support of, possibly taking that concrete area, making a pavilion, another space that we can utilize and, you know, rent out to people, and I think it would tie into the Veterans Memorial. I'd like to see that parking area expanded too, to accommodate more people to access that side of the park. Because I know a lot of people drive in with their bikes and their dogs and their strollers and head out on the trail, like, it's a popular point to embark on the trail. So, back to the other side of the park, the bathroom, storage concession, I'd like to just see that whole building gone in a new building with proper storage area for all of our events, equipment, and like upgrades to the power supply, possibly an area there that could be a community room where people can rent that area out for birthday parties and family gatherings, and just makes it a community center. We don't have a community center, but, you know, we can hold events there. I think that would be a perk for our community. And I think that's it.
All right. Scott?
I'm going to take a little bit of a different approach. I've got the same kind of list working, but thinking about it in terms of budgets and getting items done and accomplished. I guess I rank them this way. The concession stand, bathrooms, power, I think that would be a first project I would like to see done. I think parallel to that, a three-year plan on building and changing the playground equipment. So, I'm concentrating where I think what we need done in that area. And then moving with pavilions, trees, and relocation of the exercise equipment, I think will set up the rest of the park in terms of where we're going. I do like the idea of an amphitheater. Maybe I go back to the movie, it built it, and they will come. I think there's a lot of ways that creative people that we do have in our Parks and Recs department can figure out how to use that. Or maybe somebody will show up with a guitar. I mean, I don't know how I've seen those things happen. So, maybe that's year four, if you would. I do like the BMX and the volleyball and doing the improvements throughout the rest of the park. And then finally, in the backend of it, is probably ice rinks and splash pads. So, I think, looks like about a 10-year plan to put those in the sequence that I'm talking about.
Okay. Sarah?
I like the idea of moving the playground equipment a little way from the road. I have a little two-year-old, and that playground equipment's right next to Benson, it's really loud, and it's kind of an open fence that they can crawl through, just for safety and noise. I understand that it's nice that you can see it from the road, you know there's a park there, but I like the idea of it getting kind of shuffled back into the park a little ways, and then also having the natural play areas for a variety of things for kids to do. I really like this amphitheater, and I really liked how it was a splash pad slash amphitheater. And in my head, it's not a splash pad like the Farmington Hills one, which would bring tons of people. But if that's not what our community is looking for, I like the idea of just, I, maybe I'm naive on this, but just like four holes in the ground that shoot water up, you know, very simple little water feature that's turned off if we want an event, and just kind of some sort of water feature like that, I think would be very nice. And I just liked how it was a combination, if you're already building the amphitheater, to put that in with it. I'm not exactly sure on maintenance for that and everything, but as I've kind of heard, though, that if we're wanting to keep this more of a village park, I don't think it would be appropriate to have a huge splash pad, just because that would bring a lot of people. And we don't have one in the vicinity, so just depending on what we're looking for on that. I think more signage would be good, and I would like to see signs that are along the path with maps of what things are happening in the park all along the trail, just to let people know when you're in at the playground that there is a workout station on the other side of the park, because I just don't think people realize that that connects. And to give an opportunity also for us to put our events on the path where people are trapped, like, walking through. Right now, we put our posters and stuff on the sign that's over by the bathrooms, but I don't see, think that those get seen a lot. And I like the BMX trail, making that a little bit more official. I see kids using it all the time. It'd be nice to see it just developed a little bit farther, just to give them a few more things to do, and I guess it would just be a liability thing to put our sign up there and say, here's the rules, and use your own risk, and since it's already being used. And, yeah, I think those are my main things that I like.
All right. You?
I would like to see more seating, bike racks. I love the idea of having little gazebo's all around as a little sitting area, and I think it's wonderful that we have such a beautiful park. Unfortunately, it is highly underused. A lot of places would kill for an area like what we have. I'm very much for putting up a Veterans Memorial. I think that we have the space. I think that is one piece that's missing. And I think, you know, setting up little areas where they can especially bike. The playgrounds where the bicycles, I mean, where they play baseball, it'd be nice if they could have little bleachers out there, where they could end up sitting, and like, if the family comes, they can come and sit on the little bleachers. The bleacher seats right now are about this big. Not really a lover of the splash pad, but water features throughout the entire park of however water features work would be really nice and calming, soothing, if you needed to take a walk. But all in all, positively, more trees, butterfly gardens, any type of natural, perry planting, I'm all for that. And I think we have a lovely park. That's all I have to say.
And Julia, what do you like, what don't you like?
Okay, I'm thankful that the majority here do not like opening up Brisbane. I thank you from my heart. Does that, excuse me, sir, but do you live in the village?
I do, yeah.
Okay, so you don't really get a grasp of what our village is as people. We are not a downtown Walleye area, we are not a Novi nor a Wixom, we don't have a downtown grass to pull in people. We have a nice, quiet little village. I guess, I like it that way, but I really do like the thought of the restrooms. I like the thought Scott said about not having so much everything everywhere, but having spaces where you can rest and relax and have a natural, you don't have to, for John's sakes, don't entertain everybody, let us entertain ourselves in some way. Sit down, read a book, watch the kids go by. I like the, I'm not a splash pad person, nine-foot-four thing, splash pad runs about $800, $900. Then you've got maintenance, you're going to have to blow it out in the wintertime, and you're going to have to redo it in the summertime, you're going to have to have people there to maintain the water, to make sure it's of good quality. If you want to put water somewhere, make little doggy fountains, people walk their dogs. Make water fountains so people can get drinks and don't have to carry water. I mean, I like the idea of the electrical thing, it would save a lot. The restrooms is a very good idea, that somewhere down the road is going to have to Is it going to hook into commerce sewers, or is it going to be into a private well? There's that kind of maintenance you're going to have to figure out, because that's going to cost more money. I like the butterfly gardens, I like the more natural approach. I like the BMX bike path, because it's just going to be bikes, it's not going to be motorcycles, you're not going to put it in a parking lot and invite the outside to come in and create a problem. I think we have a lot of wonderful people on Parks and Rec that, they've got a lot of good ideas. And we have a council that listens to its people, which is the most important part of being a council. You have a great village to run and a lot of people who put our trust in you. And sometimes it's good to put something on the parks and, like, your stuff, you put something out there and you mix up the, you get people in uproar, it does a good thing, because you got me as a volunteer, it may not be your blessing, but because I did not like the road being opened up, I thought, I can't complain about something if I'm not willing to step forward and do something. So, mix it up, get it out there, get people upset, get them out to a meeting, you know, that's what it's all about, is communication. And we have a council and a board that's willing to work together to make us a great village, but we will never be a Wixom or a Novi or a Walleye, we don't have a downtown drift there. And I really don't want to bring in a ton of people to our parks, because then we can't use them when we make them nice. So, I'm sorry, thank you.
All right. Speaking of features in general, I think this is going to, Debbie, I'll let you sort of introduce the idea of Veterans Memorials and if you've got the stuff. And then if Phil has more to add, Phil Peters, who's a longtime volunteer, no longer in the village, but longtime involved. Just let everybody know, you know, those of us who are up here have gotten some documentation, but there's also everybody out there in the crowd, people who may see the video. What do you guys have in mind?
So, this is after the Parks and Rec, that they were going through everything with the soccer fields and what have you. And so, went up north and found myself going through different memorials and looking, my entire family was in the service, and thinking, why in the world do we not have anything here in our own park for a Veterans Memorial? And some of the pictures, and I think the council all ended up getting one of these papers, but the Parks and Rec, we already had our own, you know, how it was. So, what this is, is basically Port Austin, and it was just the different ways that they honored, they had the Purple Heart, they had the different services, branches of services on the specific, now, mind you, nothing at all is in stone in whatever we're doing, but they had the Merchant Marine, the Navy, the Army. Navy, the Army. Marines, Post Guard, I didn't think of the Post Guard. They did some pretty cool things about how they went up to the memorial with a serviceman's boots, putting them into the, up the cement. And then how they worked it with the bricks, where they were able to sell the bricks for thirty dollars a piece, because they went up and they're a little bit more expensive. But the bricks are to honor the family members or to honor and repay your respects to all the men and women who have served our wonderful country. And with the population, the way it is turning, you know, we have a lot of people that live in the village and are NAMs coming up. I mean, we're all getting older and we have a lot of Vietnam Bots and we have Chief's son and we have to go elsewhere to celebrate a memorial. And it just didn't click to me. And then I spoke with Chief about it and they just did water features and stuff. And it took them a while to end up doing that. But I went to the multi lakes and it's sort of in the back to see what kind of layout they ended up having. So I took a picture on the last one, on one of the last pages. And I just thought, wouldn't that be wonderful if we could bring something like this to our area where we can honor and be honored and be proud of who we are? And we have the perfect location. And I just, I've lived in this, my house for 34 years. I would like to give back something, I mean, I have been blessed. I've had a great house. I've had, my boy went to school this year. And I just think it's time to give back for all the wonderful things that we've experienced, especially for a long time, people who have lived here. And I would be very proud to walk through and say I was a part of that.
I love this idea.
Phil, anything to add from you?
No, I was just thinking that the area with all the settings would be a great spot for her memorial.
Off of Glengarry here?
Yes.
Up at the head of the divided trail, where we've got the little parking lot and the exercise equipment.
Yeah, where the exercise equipment is?
Correct.
Yeah. If you look in there, multi lakes, that was obviously multi lakes. There was no question we were going to have at least a couple and they have three there. And they have the brick thing there and that was all very successful. And I think, you know, being along Glengarry Road, that would be an ideal location and as I suggested, and others have too, is to spread that exercise equipment around. And even with a small gazebo or benches in front to sit and reflect, yeah, that's 100%.
But I think that would be an honor for us to have.
And I'd like to say, I love this idea. Not only did she come up with an idea, but she came up with a plan, which a lot of people come up with ideas, but there is no plan, there is no cost associated with it. Thank you very much for doing that.
And also some grant sources potentially.
Yeah.
And Julie did the grant sources, but what I ended up doing is I sat with the man who actually did this himself with, well, his, in Port Austin, they did that with themselves. So he gave me a sort of an estimate. He copied all the information that I needed as far as like their cost was, but mind you, this is going back to '08. But I think with everything that we end up having here and what we have to offer and the grants and, I even stopped by the, is it a BFW Hall up here?
Yeah.
Veterans Hall or whatever, motorcycle guys?
Oh, the American Legion?
Yes.
Or Eagles.
Okay. So I went in there and there's these big burly old guys and they're all in their Harleys and stuff and like, they wanted to kiss me. It was like, I love it, you know? So we would have their support. I mean, and they're like, you know, cupcakes and they, you know, they're not, they're not, they're very kind. And I would love to be able to take on this project.
Thank you.
And see it all work.
All right.
With all guidance from everyone.
I love the idea, first of all, but second of all, the planner was talking about needing spaces where the water gets soaked up by whether we put in gardens or something. And I think something flowery around that type of a thing would be really nice as well.
Well, you could do, yeah.
Yeah, no, there's a lot of options.
There's a lot of options. And I don't want us to necessarily go into the details of how we would plan it out, but I think there's likely to be a lot of community support for that idea.
And the more they're welcome.
We've had occasional discussions on and off over the years about, you know, we don't really have something like that in the community.
Right. And we've had somebody that brought forth an idea with a plan. And I love that. I think that's so great, because so often we have people come up here and tell us that this is what you should do. Well, how do we do it? You know, and you're saying, I'll do it. So thank you very much, Deborah.
I thank you. My honor, my pleasure.
All right. With that, I did promise folks another chance to give us more input on what they like, what they don't like. So do I hear a motion to open to the public? Motion dumped. Second, Sinkowitz, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are open to the public. So let's either get the portable mic out there or come on up.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Sue Ellen Keith. I live at 2593 Terry, which is right at the end of the center section, right next to the park. I have a problem moving parking into that area or the volleyball courts. First of all, going on the volleyball courts, volleyball brings drinking, loud noise, and that's a very residential area and the houses are very close to that section. That's, park area is very small. So if you're going to do that, I'd rather it go further towards the road where there'll be better parking. I like the idea of expanding that parking lot around Glengarry instead of putting it into the center of the village, because that increases traffic and it increases raucous. That section, I watch it every day. We have bikers that come through, we have people who walk through there. It's a nice quiet place to walk. I don't mind putting benches there, maybe put rebellion, but just keep it quiet, because the houses are so close. If you don't want to do that, I love the idea of the butterfly gardens. I love the idea of the memorial. But I think the parking lots should be expanded in the park proper and over off of Glengarry Road, if you're going to expand parking. Those are the more practical places. That's where the heavier traffic is. Let's not bring it into the village itself. As far as the, spreading the park part, the playground part, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me, raising children. You don't want to be dragging one kid while another one's going through or trying to push a stroller throughout the entire park so that a child can play on this thing or that thing.
And just to be clear, I think what people were talking about was not moving the playground equipment through the park, but the exercise equipment.
That I don't have a problem with.
And moving it down the Vida Trail.
That I don't have a problem with, but I think you need to keep the playground area in a central location so that you're not chasing children every which way but loose.
You're talking about not splitting up the under fives with the over fives.
Right. Because you're going to have more than one kid, they're going to be going two different directions. And if you keep it centrally located so the parent can watch, you don't have to have two parents taking kids every which way. That's just one, you know, just keep the central section a little quieter, because the houses are so close. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else second call?
Linda Champagne, 250 Oak Island. Commerce Township is putting a large splash pad in at Dodge Park along with the Scarlet's Park, so there will be a pretty good-sized one going in right there. Very much in favor of the natural park and possibly like tree swings or, we just saw some equipment the other day that was built with wood and tires for climbing, so that's much more natural than some of this PVC, bright green and red stuff. So I'm kind of for that. The big thing that I think might be really kind of cool would be to put water fill stations wherever we put a drinking fountain, so as people are walking through the park, they can fill their bottles out. I don't know if people have seen them in airports and things like that, but all these people that are doing their running and stuff, if we're going to have over by the Vida Trail in different places, if we're going to put drinking fountains and water fill stations would be very cool.
Thank you. And thanks for passing along the news about Commerce. I hadn't yet heard that.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's moving full blast, by the way, they're doing, Rotary's doing a big fundraiser for Scarlet's Park too. Big X area Rotary.
Hi, my name's Kyle Dorsey. I live at 2425 Brisbane. The park is behind me and then the open field to the left of my house is where the proposed big parking lot was. So very grateful that that is not going to be there now and I'm very grateful that you all seem against opening the park onto Brisbane. And I do agree with what you said of keeping parking lots out of the middle of the neighborhood to keep the traffic down and keep our neighborhoods quiet and peaceful and kind of keep it more of a neighborhood park. We don't need more cement. So again, I like the idea of keeping the open fields, keep the green, building, or building, planting trees. Love the idea. More plants, great. I do think that the equipment does need to be updated. I'm sorry, the playground equipment needs to be updated. I'm a physical therapist, so I think it's important that we are ADA compliant with that. Not really for the splash pad and amphitheater. And I do think that the veterans memorial is a wonderful idea and I'd be happy to be a part of it.
Oh, thank you.
All right. We go there.
Roger Weisenberger, 2601 Woodlong. I think you guys got great ideas with the changes that you've come up here. So the one thing that I just, I have a son who's 17 years old. He's going off to the Navy. I think that idea is a great idea, okay? Couldn't be prouder. All right? That little area that you want to turn into BMX track though, I live on Woodlong and I can tell you, people fly down there like 80 miles an hour, like, because they're cutting through, okay? And I watch it every single day. And it absolutely terrifies me that if kids were actually down there on their bikes, because right now it's just grown men playing with RC cars down there, like, that's who really goes down there. But I'm just worried about, I don't even have younger children, but I got to tell you, I am scared for the younger children in the neighborhood actually playing down there, because the stop sign was taken away. So there's nothing to impede, stop the traffic, because it's flying through and they do fly through. And the other thing was, I just, another thing is the environmental impact on everything, because I know that, I mean, in all reality, I walk down through that park twice a day, okay? I'm going to tell you, I walk my dog every day. So, and I see, I go down there and I see the sand cranes feeding in the morning, you know, I see the blue herons there, you know, it's beautiful, you know? It's, I mean, even having on the cup there, I mean, we represent it with it. So I'm just wondering, what's going to happen to that area where they feed? So that's all I got. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Jeff Miller, 2612 Brisbane. Thank you, guys. Got a real good grasp on what the people kind of want. Obviously, the veterans memorial is an excellent idea, but would this could, or could it possibly incorporate like a first responders or police and stuff at some point? Or is that the intent also?
Yeah, I mean, I think right now it's kind of an open idea about what it could incorporate. I think when, when and if we go forward, and I hear a consensus that people like the idea, we're going to have discussions about what it should be and what it is.
The bathrooms, obviously, probably should be upgraded. They've been in there since, what, the mid-'80s? Just taking consideration, they probably should be hooked up to the sewer, because they're on a septic system now. It's just as old. The other thing too, years ago, we used to go up to Jaboy Gallow and scuba diving and stuff. And we're talking about like a log kind of natural playground area in that one area of the park. What the city did up there, they had some kind of thing through the schools where the kids put in some input, put to how they would like stuff. And they worked, I'm not sure how it was done, but they worked with the people on their parks board. And together, they came up with a really cool idea, where the kids loved it, it was all natural, and it was incorporated into the trees and everything up there. And also the trees and all that, that's a great idea, but remember, they need maintenance. They got to have water. Lot of the trees are put in and it's up to the DPW to take care of them. And it puts a big burden on whether they're watered or not. So you may want to consider some kind of, whether it's an outside source to keep them watered, to get them through everything. But other than that, I think you guys got a real grasp on what the community wants. So I thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Oh, here we go.
Larry Scollan from 2432 Brisbane. I like open spaces and I don't think we needed to spend money on this. Homeowners, they're paying for this and I think they accept reasonable changes without spending money on outside help. And I've never been to the bathroom, so I don't know about that.
Like the record show, in the park. Anybody else second call?
Dave Keith, 2593 Terry. Both my wife and I are veterans, so we love the idea of the veterans memorial. We like the idea of trying to keep everything quiet as far as the natural surroundings. One of the things I would like to see is more maintenance on the pathways. They're great for bikes, but if you ride roller skates, the other kind of skate, roller blades, or I ride a hoverboard, those bumps are really rough. It's really difficult to actually, you're like bump, 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 because of all the roots and stuff. So if we can get some kind of maintenance done and kind of smooth all that out, that's all I got.
All right.
Dave Renlich, 685 Armenia. That was not part of what I was thinking, but that's a real good point. I had my father for a while in the spring and I did take him on the path. And taking someone in a wheelchair, you're talking about making the playgrounds handicapped accessible. It was not real easy pushing a wheelchair over the pathway. There was a lot of discomfort for him and exertion for me. So, yeah.
That's a good idea.
Real good idea. Julia, I love your enthusiasm and your innocence, but I can almost guarantee you that there would be a soccer field breaking ground right now if you hadn't rallied the people. So God bless you for that.
Thank you, sir.
That was on a fast track, in case you couldn't notice. But as far as all of this goes, a boulevard entrance, an electronic sign, a concession stand, an amphitheater, a splash park. Council doesn't think there's better ways to spend taxpayer money than this. And as far as, I did hear a lot of people saying they were in favor of an amphitheater. Okay, if there's going to be music played several times a year, does the average person want that near their house? Because there's people that live right around that area. Does the average person want that kind of disturbance near their house? Not everybody likes jazz. Not everybody likes rock. Ask yourself, does the average person want what we're going to put in near their house? That was the whole problem with the soccer fields. We are a small village. That's the woman you should be listening to.
Thank you.
No, sorry. We are a small village and we do have a good park right now. We have a really good park right now that meets all our needs. And we shouldn't be talking about wants. We're still not quite out of a recession. And we're talking about wants, not needs here. The park does need some things. Yes, the bathroom could use some attention. Yes, we could update the electric. Yes, we could update the electrical. I thought, I thought we had fourteen years ago, I thought we got a power board to put out there for corn roasts and all of that. Maybe that never happened, but I thought we had updated the electrical at one point. No, that never happened.
That has not happened.
It was temporary when I was.
So, anyways, let's, let Mr. Renick talk to us.
It did happen, though.
Now, we, we had one?
They just dropped the line down.
Oh, crap. Okay, well, we tried. Uh, fourteen, fifteen years ago, I don't remember actually how long ago, I actually pushed through, I was the Parks and Rec liaison at the time, and I pushed through that little playground that's up there. That's the last im, real improvement to play structures that I recall. And actually, that was, thinking about it, that was the first year, so that's almost twenty years now. So yes, the play structures could use some improvement. Uh, if you want to get an idea of what's possible, I just volunteered on a play structure out at Island Lake, at the Kent Lake, uh, facility. And, uh, they've got a, a, a really nice structure and a really good ground for people and a handicapped accessible site. So that's a good place, if you're gonna start looking at things like that, that's a good place. But again, stick with things we need, not want, for crying out loud, and for God's sake, I know we've got an obscene amount of money in the general fund, but don't blow it just because it's there. And the last thing, I, I really, really gotta take issue with this, because I heard it when I was on council, I've heard it off council, and I disagreed with it then and I disagreed with it now. The lake is not our main street. Not everybody in this village has access to that lake. Clara Miller Park is where people gather, not the lake. Uh, that lake, really, it's a man-made flooded field that need more, it needs more maintenance and attention than anything else in this village. Clara Miller Park is where you should devote your attention and devote it like you do to the lake. When I said the lake factor earlier, I meant, if you wouldn't allow it on that lake, don't allow it in Clara Miller Park. If you wouldn't allow twenty-two hundred boats extra out on the lake, then don't put ninety-four spaces, more parking spaces in Clara Miller Park. Apply where you live to where we live. Because I had my kid at Clara Miller Park. I hope to take my granddaughter there. I don't want to see it turned into the circus that this thing seems to want to make it. It doesn't look good right now. Stick with needs, not wants. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else calling the public?
Hi, wasn't really planning getting up, but Ryan Frost, been in the village over thirty years, sixteen oh nine Hepburn Lane. Ed, I want to say, you've done your homework. I appreciate what you had to say. I think it's common sense, and that's what we need, common sense. We need to spend our money, we need to study other cities, see what they've done, what are their people like? Have we done that? I haven't heard anything about Farmington or Milford, what their people like, about what, where they've spent their money. I don't think that would be hard to do. One thing comes to mind is Frisbee golf. I don't know if that's been brought up, but, uh, you can buy a Frisbee golf hole at Costco for about two hundred dollars. Put it in the ground, people stand back two hundred yards, throw a Frisbee, no cost there. Maybe cutting lawn around the hole. Simple things. Um, I think the water feature, uh, I don't know if anybody's studied it, but the water can get contaminated, and then the kids are playing in contaminated water. People can put soap in those fountains and they can go up and foam and it's a prank, but it happens.
I've seen it, it's outlined.
I mean, I think we're opening ourselves up to all the maintenance, frozen pipes under the cement that could cost who knows how many thousands of dollars to fix. Who's studied other cities? Let's study what people say they like, that, that data's out there. I could spend two hours on the internet and probably have so much information, that people like simple things, they want quiet, they want security, they want the police to come around and check the bathrooms, make sure no one's graffiti. So I think, so much money, people earn fixed incomes, we're getting older, people don't have the money to spend, and I don't understand this kind of money going into what and at what effect in months and years is a money well spent? Uh, I get emotional because that's so much money. How many lives could we save with one point two million dollars? I mean, let's spend our money wisely, let's do the studies, let's hear information about studies that have been done previously in other cities, in other communities, and, uh, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, hold on a second. Anybody else call to the public? Do I hear a motion close?
Hello.
Motion duff, second stack.
On the favor.
Close, motion carries. Scott?
I just wanted to say something about the, the plan and our planner. We had a meeting here where people could come and tell us what they liked, and this, these kind of ideas, and I, I kind of felt like we didn't get enough input, like you're talking about two percent or whatever it is. I agree with you. And, but, I'm, I'm a, I do planning at my work as well, and one of the things I found out a long time ago is, you might not know what a good plan is, but if you give them a plan that has some bad ideas in it, you're gonna find out right away. So, so by, by actually getting all these ideas out there, we hear from you guys and you tell us, no, we don't need a splash pad on, and besides, we want going up in commerce. So, I mean, a lot of these, maybe, I have to agree with you about the, about the, what do you call that, the man shell, or whatever they call it. You can rent those things from Oakland County. And, and we haven't done that, and, two or three times, and said, gee, we need a shell. So I, I would agree with doing that first. But I, but I just wanted to say the thing about, uh, don't look at the planner and say, how dare you? It's basically, we need this kind of input and those, every bad idea, the CW three bad idea, that, boom, we had participation. People saying, this is what we don't want, this is what we do want. I thought it was a great idea opening up that to Brisbane, and then you guys are going, oh no! And, and this has happened to me in, uh, planning and in Park and Rec, that when we get involvement, we get good ideas. So don't, don't look at all these ideas as, gee, how could they possibly think to do that? It's just ideas that we put out there so that we can get, you know, input from you guys, and, and I appreciate it, and it really helps.
Yeah, and I would say, don't, don't put it on the planner, because we asked him to give us a plan, that had everything we might do. So, uh, that's what we have, and now, I think that's actually a good segue for us for, uh, what I'd like to do next, which is talk a little bit about prioritization, see if we can, if we can come to some consensus, and that'll help give Chris some guidance in, in the revisions here, so we can find out what we need. So, um, I'm going to.
Right up to the whiteboard, huh?
What?
Right up to the whiteboard, huh?
Up to the whiteboard.
All right.
Move a couple of signs out of the way. So I put up here, and we can add other things if, if we need them, but, um, a list of, sort of the main ideas that were in there, uh, just kind of everything, everything that's in there, and we'll go through and I'll do, we'll do this. Yeah, so I, I put together a list, I kind of, I kind of lumped, lumped many things together in a few places, but put together what looked like the major, the major initiatives in here, and I think that, from our discussion, I captured everything that, uh, that people have talked about. Um, and what we'll do is we'll go through and just give everybody one to five, one to, five votes, you can put them all, all on one thing, you can put, scatter them around to, to other things. And what we usually get out of this exercise.
You didn't have a black pen by any chance, did you, John?
No, oh, you know what, there is one up there.
Superman would have trouble over here reading that, let alone a seventy-two-year-old with a bionic eye.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read, read through them, Ed, because no matter how black the pen is, my handwriting is hard to read anyway, so.
Okay.
Um, so what we've got up here are playing field upgrades, playground equipment, bathroom storage concession, auditorium splash pad, message sign, additional picnic pavilion, hockey basketball, stormwater detention, I included in there, though I think it's kind of one of those things that's inherent of, once we start making improvements, we have to do that. Uh, Veterans Memorial, um, Vita Trail upgrades, I kind of lumped together, but, you know, improving the surface, uh, getting some benches out there, all the things that we might do along there. Bike racks, uh, volleyball, horseshoes, et cetera, moving into the more central eastern section, abandoned streets, um, and that would be taking those dirt roads and closing them off and making it, you know, park all the way through. Uh, smaller picnic pavilions out in the center east, signage and kiosks all the way through the, the park, uh, the BMX bike improvements, uh, natural play areas, the chess grove, which was one of the items, uh, potentially in there. Uh, forestry and landscaping, I lumped together, but that's sort of, and, you know, clearing out a lot of the invasive species that have cluttered up the woods, planting some trees in some other places, making other landscaping improvements. And, uh, parking, I put down as one, as one item. I think whatever we do, we're gonna have to, you know, do a certain amount of resurfacing and re, maintenance in the main sort of the park, so this is really more getting some parking out in the, out in the central area. So, um, with that, I figured I'd start off by putting mine up there, and I wrote them down, so I wouldn't make everybody wait, and now I've lost my list. Ah, there we go. So, uh, I'm gonna scatter my votes across multiple items, and, um, I think we definitely need to do something on the playground equipment, uh, the bathrooms and storage, uh, the Vita Trail upgrades through there, forestry and landscaping, and I really liked the idea of the Veterans Memorial as proposed, and I think that would be a great addition to the park, so I'm gonna put one vote in there. So that's what I've done with my.
John, when you're talking about the upgrades through the Vita Trail, is that referring to what was talked about here by many about moving the, um, along Glengarry there and scattering them through, or is that a separate issue?
It wasn't specific to that, it was really what's in the plan right now, um, in terms of.
Do you have up there?
I don't, but I can, I can, I can, I can put it up there.
Yeah, put that one up there. I don't think it'll be just for me.
Yep. Okay, uh, move exercise equipment along trail, so. So that's what we've got, and we'll just go through and see what, uh, what folks want.
One here, one here.
All righty, that's, that's exactly it, it's kind of a measure of breadth and depth here. Hold on a second. No, you, you go ahead, finish. Yep, I think so. Uh, we had a, we had a question, what's, what's the chess grove? If you look in the plan, there's, there's a potential, one of the things that was potentially mentioned in there is putting in some chess tables and some, some, uh, some seats in an area out in the center or eastern park, uh, where people could play chess, play other games, have a, have a little seating area. So, it says chess grove. Bathroom storage concession.
That's actually six on that one. Five.
Don't worry, we're good.
We're good.
Okay, so, uh, Veterans Memorial, BMX, parking, and ex, move the exercise equipment along the trail, and we'll just get that there, so we're six. All right, Scott?
One thing I wanted to say about this concession stand, isn't it just a thing you open up and you can sell stuff out of? I don't, if we make the whole storage unit, I, we're not talking about putting a, some to cook in there. But that's what I, if, if that's what we're talking, that's what, that's what I'm voting for. I'm not voting for a big, you know.
As far as I know, the plan, the plan has only been to have basically some storage and then an area where people can stand, we can open up, swing the door open, and there's a, there's a shelf facing out.
Okay, so my vote's good on that one.
Yeah, well, yeah, not a full kitchen.
At a quarter here, that's awesome. Um, yeah, I like this idea. I think it's pretty much the same as that idea, though, but I do want to see.
Well, you know.
I think I have one more. All right.
Okay. Thank you. Get to the parrot's head of table, you can either, you can either come up or you can call them out and I'll, I'll mark them up here.
Five, right?
Yep, five.
I think it's six.
Five, just five.
I want six.
Well, this is all about prioritization, you gotta choose, it's hard.
We're gonna let our administrator put some marks up there, too?
Just take a picture.
I, I, I see him shaking his head. I'm going to rely on the administrator afterwards to tell us what's actually practical. There you go.
Moving exercise equipment?
Right here, I'm gonna give that two, and I'm gonna put two for the Veterans Memorial.
There you go, so one at a tally, so. That brings us to five.
I don't even need it.
There we go.
Veterans Memorial, because it's, it's a goal.
All right.
Dance.
You lead.
Equipment, bathroom.
For, for road sign up on Glengarry and then some kiosks going through with, you know. You get one more, one more vote, cast it wide, the pressure's on.
That did mention her.
Okay. All right. John up here next.
Going around. Looks like we have a Veterans Memorial for sure.
It certainly, we've got a lot of support for that, not surprisingly.
That's all one of the same, right?
Yeah.
I don't know what stormwater detention's doing up there, but I'll, I'll pass on that.
I'm, I'm very, I'm very stormwater detention, but actually, actually looking at it, we're, we're going to have to do that anyway, so.
Is that, one, two, three, four, yeah, so.
You get one more, one more vote, cast it wide, the pressure's on.
That did mention her.
Okay. There we go. All right. John up here next.
Going around. Looks like we have a Veterans Memorial for sure.
It certainly, we've got a lot of support for that, not surprisingly.
That's all one of the same, right?
Yeah.
I don't know what stormwater detention's doing up there, but I'll, I'll pass on that.
I'm, I'm very, I'm very stormwater detention, but actually, actually looking at it, we're, we're going to have to do that anyway, so.
Is that, one, two, three, four, right? Is that five? Yeah, I'm glad you counted.
Cat, please.
Yeah, we got it.
All right. Nobody's put all five on a single thing yet.
Ed, almost did. Ed, almost did. Just about.
No, there is no vote on the 10-second runoff rule.
Yeah. There was 11 seconds.
So, actually, before you go, I'm going to write up a little tally. You can get an action, action photo.
John, while you're telling that, you can hear me. I didn't, I thought the power drop was in or sufficient. No matter what we do, we need the power back there for whatever events are coming up, either the Tuesday nights or the next corn roast. Let's get a bid on it and get that done.
Agreed.
First, I mean, right off the start, no, don't have to go to, I thought it was voted on council about 15 years ago, but I guess...
So, Ed, I, I agree. And actually, it was the power drop and the fact that it hasn't been put in for 14 years or 15 years or however long it's laid out there that made me want to do a park, a park plan in the first place because we...
Well, we need the power in.
Yeah, we haven't prioritized and we haven't, we haven't figured the order of doing things.
What we're going to do, but for the next couple of years...
Yeah, and years ago, it came up that we didn't do it because we were talking about the addition at the concession stand and wanted to do it at the same time as that. And we did have a price out.
And why wouldn't we still want to do it that way?
Oh, we still want to do it. But we did...
Because you say do it right now. I was thinking...
Do it right now.
Tell, tell you what. Let's come up with a plan and let's, let's fit it into the plan.
And then do it, yeah, right.
Okay. So, um, just so everybody can, can see what we came up with here, not surprisingly, pretty strong support for a lot of the things that we discussed when we went around. Nine votes playground equipment, nine votes bathroom storage concession, 13 for the Veterans Memorial. Over here in moving things to the sort of eastern, central and eastern side, a lot of votes, a little more scattered across things, but three for Vita Trail, four for signage and kiosks, four for BMX bike improvements, couple votes for natural play areas, six votes for forestry and landscaping and improving the natural environment there, a couple votes for getting some parking in there as this goes along, and five votes for moving the exercise equipment from where it is now to along the trail. So, I think that's, that's a pretty clear consensus on what we would consider to be the most important things. It's also, I think, a pretty, a pretty clear consensus... Oh, you know what? Forgot a little batch of votes. I was going to say, um...
You got some proxy votes?
Brian Nedrow, yes. He sent along some information. Look, I want everybody to be heard, even if I, even if I screw up the order in which we're doing things. So, well, let me, let me, let me just read this, read this off. This was from Brian about what he, he would prioritize here. As we discussed, I will be out of town and business tomorrow and not able to attend, et cetera, et cetera. Here are my thoughts on the park at this point. I think it would be good to update the playground equipment. It has been around a long time and in need of updating. Also, the restrooms are due for an overhaul. A larger pavilion is a good idea, too, along with the electrical upgrades that have been discussed for some time. I think it would be good to utilize the current soccer field, but it needs to be useful. I drove by the park tonight and saw two soccer fields practicing on the outfield of the baseball diamonds. The children were young and they had small portable goals set up. I think it would be prudent to have one field that could be used for a practice field for a pickup game for neighborhood kids to use, and the current goal areas are in disrepair. Another item that we should have is some small parking in other parts of the park. To the east, it could allow for parking around the tennis courts and other amenities as they are developed. Possibly either vacating the dirt roads or paving them, thus incorporating them into other future uses. I hope the work session becomes a positive way to improve our park. It is another item that makes this a great community to live in and raise a family. So, I think from there, really in keeping with what we have up there, but I did want to make sure that Brian's, Brian's input got heard.
Very good.
He was very sorry. He was, he got called out of town on work at the last minute and was unable to attend. So, um, so that's the consensus on what we have. I think also kind of a pretty clear consensus on some of the things that might be a little less, a little less of a priority for us, something we're less likely to spend money on in the short run. So, playing field upgrades got, got nothing other than some attention from Brian to fixing what, what we have there on the soccer field. Auditorium splash pad got, got one vote. Message sign, nothing. An additional picnic pavilion, no votes in here. Only one for doing or moving things around hockey basketball. Nothing really around moving volleyball horseshoes. Abandoned streets got, got no actual votes per se. Small picnic pavilions got one. And chess grove got none. So, I think that's a useful exercise for getting the focus of this plan on the things that we really value and then making sure we work on the most important things first, which I think for us are going to be sort of kicking off and looking at what we can do around the Veterans Memorial, what we want to do. Making improvements to the playground equipment, which there's been a lot of discussion around. And the whole Scarlet Park thing really, I think we all learned a lot about what's out there and what's, what's really useful. And improving that bathroom storage concession and fixing the power situation down there. So, I'd say those are sort of the, the main things first. And then, as time permits, getting some of these other things that really improve the natural area and the accessibility of the central and eastern parts of the park. So...
Mr. President, would we be able to tell the Parks and Rec group that next year at the corn roast and at the Tuesday night, they will have a power drop in guarantee?
I, I think, let's, let's get a plan. Let's put it in there. Let's find it.
I wouldn't say anything without contacting DT and their planners because...
Well, we already had that done, but we just didn't...
Was it changed at the portal?
Public hearing.
Because it's, it's an underground service, so...
Okay. That's got to be a priority.
How about that's a goal?
How about a priority?
I, I think it's, I think it's a high priority. I think we had a lot of vote for it. There's a lot of support for that. We want to do that. Let's just make sure we do it, we fit it in with the plan. It's obviously a high priority. It's something that we can't kick around for 14 years again. Let's just, let's get it done.
Just add electrical job to bathroom storage concession. Electrical job.
How long have you heard that, Jeff?
A long time, yeah.
So, that's in there.
Okay.
There's also, I think, some low-hanging fruit over there, like a bike rack. How hard can that be?
Bike racks, bike racks are pretty easy.
Yeah.
And there are some pretty cool bike racks out there.
Yeah.
Reasonable.
So...
And I also thought that where you had the, move the equipment along the Vita Trail, we really need to determine, is that part of what we want to do with the Veterans Memorial? To put, so that you can use that area for the Veterans Memorial and move the things along the trail. It's probably a good idea to combine those, but that's just my idea.
I, I, so, here, here's the thing. We've got a planner. He's got a lot of experience with these things in other communities, how they're used, how they go. I think, is this, I think this is all good input for you. And I think you can come away from this with a real clear idea of what we're looking for. So, and tell me if that's not the case.
No, I, yeah, I think, again, as I said, I wanted... Again, my role tonight was to listen to you. And, you know, I've worked with a lot of different communities, both big and small. I've had some townships that have had 1,000 people, and they've got their little central parks and the same kind of thing that's, that's going on there. So, I can appreciate where you guys are all coming from. And I think that these are great ideas. As I said earlier, I love the idea of Veterans Memorial Park, or Veterans Park, Veterans Memorial, sorry. I do think if you're going to put a memorial up there, then it makes perfect sense to, to scatter the Vita Trail equipment at that point. Just put some concrete pads out to hold, to hold the, hold the equipment and maybe do some upgrading to the trail at that point, again, using the limestone or something like that, if you, if you want to keep it as natural as possible. If you want to make it an asphalt trail, the Vita Trail, that's a possibility, too, because then you do have the ability, it's a little bit better mobility for people in wheelchairs. I was leaning towards limestone simply because I think it's a little bit more natural appearance and it meets the ADA requirements that are out there. But, you know, Ed, I'd love your opinion on that. But otherwise, yeah, I think this, this gives me some good information to work with and I'll, I'll upgrade the plans as appropriate, get it out to the park board and to Nathan, and see what draft two brings back.
Mr. President, on that point, who does, do we get a quote on what, what our charges are going to be? Or is it just, we get a bill when it's done? From, Nathan, how is that?
Chris, you, it would be fair to say that you could put together a proposal to create draft two based on the feedback you've got tonight. Is that...
Yeah, yeah, definitely. We had talked about not to exceed the already, and I'll, I'll make sure I put that into a more formal agreement.
Okay. So, get that back to us as a proposal. We can bring it back to the next council, the October council meeting, vote on it and proceed.
Can I ask something of Chris?
Sure.
Chris, can you talk just briefly about the, the ability for an adopted master plan to lead to a higher likelihood of getting grants?
The master, when the MDNR looks at grant applications, one of the things they consider is the amount of planning that's gone into it. Having a recreation plan is an absolute requirement which the village already has. But if you have a specific park master plan like this one, and you can point to big-ticket items that you want to fund, and you can show that we have gone through X many different meetings, that we've had this many iterations of a, of a plan put out, and we have general agreement between the park board, the, the village council, and the population, that greatly strengthens your case for getting funding later on. So, that's, that is a, a key and, I mean, absolutely critical reason for having this plan in place in the first place.
And with your experience having worked on this, are there things up there that would be very high probability for grant applications?
Well, as we, you were talking about earlier, the, the low-hanging fruit, that's something that you can get what's called the Recreation Passport Grants. There's not a lot of competition for those in general. And it's a, it's a smaller grant amount. So, you have to have a matching dollar amount. I think it's 25% for Recreation Passport. I'm not positive on that. But something like...
So, Chris, would that, would that be things like, you know, benches and bike racks?
Exactly.
Other improvements along that, that existing multi-community bike trail?
Right, exactly. So, that's one, that's one option. Things like forestry and landscaping, DTE has programs out there to help support that. So, they will actually help you acquire trees and get them planted for, for a pit. It's, it's really just, and that's one that's easily available to any community. I don't believe that there are matching funds required for that. I'm trying to think of what else up here is relatively easy. Playground equipment, there's a lot of different grant opportunities out there, not just the MDNR. Certainly, as we were looking into the Scarlet Smile Playground there, we saw a lot of grant funding available from, from different sources, whether it be from corporations like Lowe's or Home Depot or other centers for, for mobility and so on. So, those are, there's different avenues to take. It doesn't necessarily mean it's easier, but because you've got more piles of money to pull from, you have a better chance overall.
And I know you can't, like, guarantee that we'll be swimming in grant money, but I just wanted to be clear with everyone that once this is adopted, we'll be using this for the next 20 years to apply for grants. This will be part of our application. And so, when you see that 1.6 million dollar price tag, the hope would be that a lot of that could be funded from other sources outside of the general fund or combination. But I just wanted to be clear that people understood that there is a, a purpose for adopting this beyond just what's on paper. It is going to help us get grants in the future.
Thanks, Nathan. That's a, a really important point about this, this process. All right. I think you've got what you need. Come back to us with a proposal. We'll talk about it at the next council meeting. Hopefully, you know, hopefully it's within what we can fund. We'll, we'll proceed. Anybody else with any, any, any questions, comments?
Ed?
Motion to adjourn? Motion second psycho, on favor? All right. Close. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.